Bernice, let me know when we're all right. Well, good morning. Welcome to the December 17th Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order and we're going to begin with the roll call.
Suizur Brandal?
Here.
Suizur Pacheco?
Here.
Suizur Mendez? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Suizur Quintero?
Here.
Chairman Magzik?
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
First on the agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance. And before I introduce our speaker, I just want to let everyone know that we're going to be doing something slightly different. So, right after we get done with the invocation and pledge of allegiance, we're going to be moving into closed session. Then we'll come back out and then we'll deal with approval of the agenda. So, with that, here delivering our invocation today, we have John Girardi. He is the Executive Director of Right to Life of Central California and the Development Director and Founder of the Obria Medical Clinics of Central California. Right to Life provides educational resources for churches and schools as well as direct assistance to women and couples facing challenging pregnancies. The Obria Medical Clinics is a nonprofit OB-GYN clinic serving lower-income women in the Fresno area with quality health care. John is an attorney and a radio host. He graduated from the University of Notre Dame and Notre Dame Law School. John grew up in Clovis and he and his wife Holly live in Clovis with their five children. John, please step forward and lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, while you are a God of power and might, 2,000 years ago, you sent your Son into the world as a small, weak, and defenseless child growing in the womb of his mother. In your Son's life and teaching, he taught us to see the face of God in the poor, in the weak, in the neglected of our society, and that whatever we did to the least of our brethren, we did unto him. Shine the light of your grace upon us in this time when so many remember your coming into the world on that cold winter night 2,000 years ago. Give all of us the grace to love and cherish you in the faces of the poor, the weak, the needy, of children, of their mothers, of the homeless, the poor, and all those in need. Bless all of us, bless all of our efforts, bless our country, our state, and our county. We ask all of this in the name of your Son, in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, our board is going to recess and go into closed session, and then we will return and report out of closed session. So, we will be right back in a few moments.
We're going in the back.
All right, we are back from closed session. And County Council, is there anything we need to report out?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The board went into closed session under anticipation of litigation based on some complaints that the board had received about the distribution of materials and the noticing for item 7.2. I believe the board is going to take some action with respect to the agenda to address those concerns.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. And with that, we'll move to next item.
Approve Agenda, item number one. Mr. Chairman, members of the public, County Council, item 16 on closed session is deleted.
Any other modifications from staff on the agenda before I make a modification? Right, hearing none. We are going to actually pull item 7.2 from the agenda, and I am requesting that item 7.2 be heard on Friday, this Friday, the 20th, at 3:00 p.m. And there were some documents that were not made available to the public, that will be available to the public either through the Clerk's Office or our website. So, I would encourage those individuals who brought some of those issues to our attention to take a look at the Clerk's Office or the website.
And I would just note, that's going to be a special meeting. The Chair is calling a special meeting for Friday.
That is a special meeting. That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just, for any members of the public that don't know what we're talking about, 7.2 is the Tax Sharing Agreement MOU with the City of Fresno. So, just so everybody's clear, that's the item that we're talking about. We're going to hold a special meeting?
Yes.
Agreement under Human Resources was deleted and it was mentioned at that time that it would return to your board today. However, that item does not appear on your agenda today as staff has informed me that HR has informed us that it will no longer come to the board. Just wanted to put that on the record because at the last meeting, we stated it was going to come on the 17th. It is no longer going before the board for consideration.
Any other items to be pulled on consent? Anyone in the public wishing to pull an item off consent? Please step forward and let us know which item you would like pulled and we will hear that after we approve the rest.
And Pam Horn, I spoke with you about a month ago, item number 20.
Item 20, all right, we will pull item 20. Thank you. Seeing no other comment from the public, I'm going to close the public portion and entertain a motion for approval of the remainder. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and that passes unanimously. And I think we'll take up item 20 now. So, item 20 is conduct second hearing and adopt amendments to Title 8, Chapter 8.4, noise control of the ordinance code of Fresno County and wave reading of the ordinance in its entirety. So, at this time, if you can step forward and just share your public comments, that would be great.
Again, thank you for listening. You listened to me a while back and I'm very excited that things are moving so, so well, so forward. I don't know how long it's been in the works, but my only concern in reading some of the guidelines and where you're going with the ordinance is, I feel like, and I kind of expressed this before, like, the fines need to be more significant. Because we all know, if you hit somebody in the pocketbook, it gets their attention. So, I mean, I understand that it's going to increase and, but that also involves the deputies having to come out. So if you come out the first time and you find them 250 and they come back and, I think it's a waste of time and then if it isn't effective because it's not enough money, you're going to be back here addressing it again, saying, gee, maybe should have, you know, maybe, I don't know. That's my personal feeling, so, thank you for listening.
Anyone else wishing to comment on item 20? Seeing none, I'll just state that with this ordinance, if there are modifications that need to be made in the future, they will be made. But this is more than what we have now, so I'm excited to begin to utilize it. So, with that, any other members wishing to comment on item 20? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and that item passes. Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm a little out of tune, I've never been to one of these before, but did you say that Public Works, it's now closed, that we can't speak on something?
Only on item 20, relating to the noise ordinance. Yes, and so we're going to now move through each item one by one, so, very good, thank you.
Under Chairman Mexican Administrative Office, 2.1, consider and take action on proposed administrative policy, 48.1, naming rights of eligible county facilities.
Very good, and I'll just kind of start this off. Really, we've seen unprecedented development and growth with different county projects that have been built. And on May the 7th, there was a presentation that Public Works gave, just talking about future projects from the Reedley Library to the Ag Building and other facilities as well. And there were, there was a discussion that started at that meeting about naming of facilities. And I went back and watched the tape just to see, you know, what kind of direction was given, and I laughed a little bit because direction was given at that particular meeting on May the 7th to bring a policy back quickly. And there was some expectation that it would be just maybe two or three months. And at one point, it was supposed to be, it was delayed and was supposed to come back in October. Well, here we are, December 17th, and we have, which I think is a very complicated kind of policy before us today. But, you know, again, we've got a lot of facilities from, and future facilities that'll be built too, and interested parties who would like to contribute to those buildings and are interested in having an opportunity to have rooms and spaces named after them. And so this is the policy that county council kind of came up with it, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, good morning, and you are correct, there was a discussion back on May 7th, and we apologize, it's coming later than anticipated. We, as you know, we brought a number of other policies during that time and found it was a little more complicated than what we originally thought. But a couple of things, and I'll have council speak to this as well. The government code requires a couple of things that are part of this recommendation today. One is that when you're naming a facility and it's in exchange for a donation to the county, that there is a public bidding process. And number two, it requires counties to either accept the highest responsive bidder or to reject all bids. So the primary control the board has is, is setting a minimum bid or through delegating that to, to relevant staff or myself, or to reject all bids. I appreciate county council's work on this, I know it was much more than what we originally anticipated, but the intent is trying to get a naming policy consistent with that direction. So, want to thank Samantha Buck, who can also answer more detailed questions, but at this time, I'll pause to answer any questions that you may have, or council may also answer those questions.
Questions of staff? From any members? Sam, do you have any additional insights on this item?
Thank you Supervisor Samantha Buck, County Administrative Office. The policy before your board and also an ordinance change, this is the legal mechanism, as Paul had mentioned, that allows for naming rights in exchange for donations or receipt of funds. I'd like to thank Brian Malickian and county council, he was the one that crafted this policy. There's no specific statute for naming rights, so what he did is he had to extensively do the research, spent a lot of time finding a statute, and then we had to work with what we had to revise it to allow for this process. So if your board approves it, what this does is it delegates the authority to the CIO to set the minimum bids, and then also the term of the naming rights agreement that would come back before your board. We would have to go in and develop the management directive, which talks about the process on how this would work, and then return to your board the end of January for the second hearing on the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Sam. Brian, question I do have, so I've seen other cities allow for naming of facilities, whether it be David MacDonald Park or Miss Winkle's Pet Adoption Center in Clovis, and they have different policies that they've used in, in just kind of making that happen, so why couldn't we use something a little bit simpler than what's before us today?
Okay, Brian Malickian, Chief Deputy County Counsel, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things, number one, a county has its own specific authority under statute. We're different than cities such as charter cities who have broader powers than the county, so we have to look to county property law, number one. Number two, we have to find a connection between the right to name and the right to associate that name with the facility. And the statute that I found is government code 25337, which is stated in your gen item. So I have the difficulty of not knowing how other agencies have done it, we have limited time to do this, but this is what I came up with.
If I could, if I could just comment, the essentials of the assignment are to do something that was a revenue exchange for naming rights. Whenever we're doing that, we're essentially licensing, you know, part of our building to the public, you know, in exchange for money. The law, state law then puts limits on what the county can do in terms of how we do, you know, pick and choose that when we're exchanging the naming rights for money. If it's, you know, nothing prevents the county, as we've done in the past, from naming buildings after people that have made major contributions to the community without going through this, this process.
Mr. Chairman, if I would.
Please, please.
I would, I would concur with the chairman. What seemed so, so simple is now a document almost as complicated as a tax sharing agreement with the city. I would concur, although you, you explained it, county council, we have named, not me personally, but this body has named other buildings with little to no issue, but I understand the issue with those is no money was exchanged for those naming rights. So apparently, we're anticipating a windfall of money that we're going to have people wanting to, to name our, our buildings. So we're getting in front of that, which I'll appreciate the, the chairman for, for doing that. I don't remember the May meeting as succinct as he does, maybe I'll have to go back and, and relook at it. But it sure seems a complicated process, and my whole issue is, if we go and do this and a group comes in of any nature and is the highest bidder, and that group is not acceptable to me as an individual and the constituents that I represent, do we still have the ability to, to deny that?
Yeah, the board, the majority of the board always has the ability to reject all bids.
Okay, because when I first read it, it seemed like the CIO was doing everything, and where does that show that this is going to come back to the board? Because it seems like there's a second step, so it's hard to vote on this, not knowing what the second step is.
Well, the, the resolution and the ordinance provide for the CIO presenting the successful bidder, just like we would if it was a ward of a public contract.
Like a road?
Like a road, to the, to the board. At that point, you can either accept the highest bidder, highest qualified bidder, or you could reject all bids.
So unlike the roads though, while it's generally practiced that we accept the lowest bidder in that case, there has been occasion that we don't accept the lowest bidder, for whatever reason, and we go to the second lowest bidder. So, but under, when we do naming rights, we don't have that ability to do that? We have to accept the highest, or we have to reject everybody?
The, the situations in which you have a public work contract that you get to reject other bids is when their bids are noncompliant under the specifics of either the bid process or the, or the state law, you know, that makes them not have met some satisfaction, so they are in fact.
Well, the layman's terms would be no.
They are in fact, yeah.
Without, all the.
They are not, they are not in fact the lowest bidder, because they're not the lowest qualified bidder.
Okay, that's it for me right now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Yes, Sal.
You know, it seemed that, yeah, I agree with, with the supervisors that it's a bit complicated, it seems like you're opening up a Pandora's Box, but you look at, it seems pretty easy when universities accept contributions to name buildings, and, I mean, they, they've already got their process in place, but I don't think it's as complicated. I know with the city of Fresno, when we named Pillabose Park, that was through a donation, that land, and that, I mean, it was, it was just a pretty easy process to get it done. It just seems like it's muddying up the waters, and, and in the end, it's the board that decides whether to accept or reject it. I don't know if, if it's a different process that you're recommending here.
Again, the county, you know, one, my office was tasked with finding one to, to generate revenue, not to provide a donation program, that's what we developed. Two, counties are different than cities, particularly charter cities. Even though we're a charter county, we don't have the same home rule situations that come into contact with that. We have specific rules and regulations, mostly state law, that, that handle how we dispose of county property. When you're allowing somebody for money to put their name on a building, as opposed to somebody that's been a big donor towards the library in years past, and you decide to, of your own volition, not as a condition of them making those donations, you know, to, to name the library after them, that's, that's a different situation. If you're going to put it out to say, we want to see who's going to donate money to, and it's not donate, I don't like using the term donate, they're paying money to get the right to put their name on that building. That's what this policy was designed to do. It doesn't, again, it doesn't stop the board from, if somebody has, because they want to see a Ag Center built, donating money in the past, if there's enough time and it's disconnected from that, so it's not really a quid pro quo, the board can honor whomever they want when they're naming buildings, as long as it's not connected or guaranteed, you know, and tied to that payment of money.
Again, counselor, I, I am not a counselor in any name, shape, or form, simply a, a regular person elected to office. It, it kind of seems unrealistic, that, again, I appreciate the chairman for having this, but how would we know if somebody wants to donate or contribute money to the naming rights if they don't come forward and tell us? We go to, we're going to automatically now, we're going to put Clovis and Reedley Library, we're going to say, if you want to name it, we're going to put bids out for this? I mean, it seems the, the chicken or the egg. Until somebody comes forward and says, hey, I'd like to name that, you can't have a quid pro quo, so how, how are we going to, how are you going to practically implement that?
Well, if a, if a person, you know, is interested, if you go through this process, if they're the only one that's interested, that would accomplish the same thing. I'm not saying that this policy, which is designed for bidding out the naming rights to our buildings, you know, can accomplish exactly what, what you're, what you're describing now.
Mr. Chairman, is the city of Clovis or Fresno for that matter, are they charter cities? I mean.
So, the city of Fresno is a charter city, the city of Clovis is a general law city. And so, actually, we are a charter county, I would say, in some respects, we have more flexibility than a general law city, which has to follow all the statutes and laws as laid out.
Not, not on, not on county property, on county property law under the, the county charter is very limited on, on that, that's controlled by the government code. I will say that there are counties that do this by setting up a nonprofit, and that the money goes, the, they, they do enter into just a donation agreement. We're not convinced necessarily that that's a, meets all the requirements of the government code, but the alternative, they set up a nonprofit, the donation goes to the nonprofit that supports the library, the county board of supervisors names the library, but the county doesn't get the money. And they've, they've created that separation from the, from the government code restrictions by doing it that way.
I think this goes along with Supervisor Mendez's favorite saying, you know, we're the government, we're here to help. It seems something so simple is so, so complicated now, but.
And I don't just.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your efforts, I don't, I don't like this, maybe it's one of those necessary evils, and then maybe in the, what the clerk had mentioned or county mentioned, that the administrative rules following will help clarify this for me. So, again, I don't like it, I'll support it as a necessary evil, and we'll see what comes back before us. But, again, it just seems something so simple is so complicated and unnecessary.
Well spoken, any other comments? All right, with that, this is an item that I worked with the CIO's office, I appreciate the time and effort that they put in, appreciate the attorneys, and with that, I'll make a motion for approval of this item.
Public comment?
I opened, and there was no public comment, and closed it, yeah.
You missed it.
I'll make a motion, is there a second? All right, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, anybody opposed? And it sounds like it passes with a lot of people with hesitation, but it still passes. All right, next item.
We now move to 2.2, under Supervisor Mendez, approve administrative policy 29, Board Supervisor Meetings and approve and adopt new administrative policy 79, Board referrals to staff.
Supervisor Mendez, the floor is yours.
I think all this is, is we're memorializing stuff this board already does, and some of the provisions can be changed individually on a majority vote of the board, so I think we're already doing it, and that's just memorializing what we're already doing.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none from us, anyone in the public wishing to comment on item 2.2? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number three, under County Clerk Register of Voters, receive certified statement of votes cast for the November 5th, 2024 consolidated general election and declare elected the candidates with majority vote totals and the results of each measure voted on the each consolidated election under the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors.
All right, I'm going to, I think we're going to be Skyping in or Zooming in, James, so we're going to see if this works. I told staff that if, oh, we can't hear him though, let's see, let's, hold on a second. Mr. Coos, let's see if we can get some audio. Mr. Coos, let's see if we can get some audio. Fortunately, if we can't fix audio, I'm told that you know sign language. You can always do an.
I'll be very.
Dance. Oh, lucky us, we hear you now. So the floor is yours, James.
Good morning, Chairman Magzig and Supervisors. I'm James Coos, here at County Clerk, Register of Voters. Please accept my apologies for not being present in person for today's report. I'm here today to report on the successful certification of the November 5, 2024 consolidated general election. On September 10 of this year, the department came to this board for permission to consolidate the November 5 election. As we do with all elections, where local jurisdictions wish to receive election services in conjunction with a statewide election. On December 3, 2024, we provided official certification of the November 5 election results to the California Secretary of State. Those certified results are attached to this board item. We respectfully request that the board declares the results of this election for those contests and measures under the board's jurisdiction, per California Election Code Section 15400.
All right.
This election, we actually had 330,000 voters cast ballots in Fresno County, a turnout of 64.7%. This percentage turnout is the second lowest this century during a presidential general election, and is consistent with the lower turnout the county experienced in March of this year. However, the number of ballots cast is the second highest in Fresno County history, eclipsed only by the presidential general election in November 2020. Just interesting statistical event there, where the increased registration has meant that our percentage turnout has gone down, while actual physical ballots being counted, voters counting, voting has gone up. 63,000 voters received assistance at a Fresno County vote center this election, a 400% increase over the March primary, and a 20% increase over November 2020. Over 6,000 voters used the county's new live vote by mail process to cast their vote by mail ballot at a vote center. While many voters did take advantage of early in-person voting opportunities, the majority, over 66% of voters receiving assistance at vote centers, went on election day. As I noted at your December 3 meeting, the department completed the required manual tally audit of ballots cast this election. 12,000 ballots, cast ballots, were included in the audit of our tabulation, and no errors were found. We did identify one adjudication issue, a human error reviewing an overvote, but our voting system did its tabulation job perfectly in this audit. Not all of our news is positive statistics. The high number of in-person voters, especially on the final days of the election process, did lead to long lines at some vote centers. The department had been warning the public that lines would occur on election day for several months, really four months ahead of time. But it was still surprising how many voters waited until the very last minute on election day. The department had been planning for a high in-person turnout, so while lines were long, all voters in line on election day were able to vote, if with a little bit of a wait time. The department will have to strongly consider additional locations for future high turnout elections, as physical capacity limits created many of the lines we experienced this election. We also experienced a differential use of early in-voting, in-person voting. We had some locations that had wonderful in-person, and other locations where everyone just waited until the last day and didn't access early voting opportunities at all. Additionally, a registration list maintenance project that the department conducted in September 2024, intended to more accurately precinct residence addresses instead resulted in several addresses being assigned to an improper precinct. For many of these addresses, there was no impact this election, but for some, this error meant voters received and cast the incorrect ballot. This error did not impact the result of any contest in Fresno County, so the department was able to move forward with certifying the election results. The department has begun corrective actions to properly precinct the addresses affected this election, and ensure that this process cannot cause harm before it is ever used again. Election activities have not ended with the certification of the November 2024 general election. Fresno County conducted two recounts and has received a request from the city of Fresno to conduct a special election in March of 2025, due to a vacancy caused by the results of the November 2024 general election. Fresno County's first tie in 25 years was broken via recount that identified a ballot that had been counted twice by staff. And the recount for Kingsburg Joint Union High School District appears to have pushed Measure K over to passing with 55.007% of the vote. The special election in Fresno County District 5 officially started last Friday, and candidate filing opens tomorrow and closes this Friday at 5:00 p.m., a very tight window for any persons interested in that contest. Information regarding this special election is available on the department website at I would like to thank the board for its continued support of our election processes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Coos? So one question I have, Mr. Coos, I know there were a couple of issues regarding a, a mailbox that was left open, and more specifically, some individuals that received wrong ballots. So can you just share briefly some of the things that, some of the things that you're implementing to make sure that those types of issues don't arise the next election?
So regarding the vote by mail drop off, where a key was left in the lock, we've now, we were able to recover that key, actually just over 24 hours, and the key was actually secured by the site, which we very much appreciate their cooperation. We're going to rekey all of our drop boxes, and that way, even with that key being out there for a little while, all future elections, that key is now worthless and under a strict control going forward. We've changed the way our teams will access the keys there, our log, actually doing a checkout process rather than having the keys assigned per location. So that process, we've gone through and been able to make changes, and many of those changes actually were implemented the next day. So as soon as that came to awareness, we made those adjustments. The other issue, as I mentioned, during the pre-election period, actually on September 10 is when it was implemented, but it was actually a process before that, we turn, we're looking at improving our registration list. It is a focus of the department, and I know something that the board is very interested, that we continue to improve the quality of our registration list. And one of those areas is when we have bad addresses, when a voter gives us an address that is questionable or might actually tie to multiple addresses. And as part of that, we did do this process this election, where we compared our registration data versus geographic information system data with actual physical location information. And we found that there was an error in the G I S file that we were using. That then led to us incorrectly updating precinct, registration precincts for a set of voters. Those voters, a limited subset, did receive a wrong ballot, and they were spread across the county, so there was never a concentration of them. This was very, fairly random in the way that error existed, so that it had no effect on any individual race or any race as a whole. We were lucky in Fresno County that many of our races had fairly wide margins.
Very good. Thank you, James, for that. And is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on this presentation from Mr. Coos? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. And do we need to take official action? I know the election's already been certified, or do we just vote to receive the information as presented, or do we even need to do that?
Action number two, Mr. Chairman, is declare the elected candidates with the majority vote totals, and the results of each measure voted. You do declare the victor, so you want to do both action items.
All right. So with that, members, fair enough, I'll entertain a motion for approval as listed in the agenda.
So moved.
Turn second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, James. We look forward to seeing you back here in Fresno County soon.
Thank you.
And so before we move to the next item, I've received a request from Supervisor Quintero. He has just some general comments that he would like to share now, since he has a captive audience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just wanted to make some comments, as this is the last meeting that I'll be serving on as a member of the Board of Supervisors. So to you folks here, the folks out in TV land, and those that are watching virtually, wanted to say good morning to everyone. And also to let you know, this is a very special time of the year for me. I want to thank you all for being here. And first and foremost, it's basically the, my last speech that I'll be giving, so just bear with me. Supervisor Chairman Magzig told me to move my lips fast, so we can get through this. And first and foremost, I want to thank our Lord Jesus Christ. I give you all the honor and praise from my life experience. And as stated earlier, it's a special time of the year for me. It's, this month is my wedding anniversary and my, and my birthday. So happy anniversary, sweetie. I want to thank for all this time that we spend as an elected person. I want to thank my wife, Hope, for being by my side through all, through it all. As she stated often, it's always shoulder to shoulder. She's my pillar and strength when I'm running on empty. There's no one else I would want to take this journey with. I also want to thank my family for their prayers, encouragement over the years. It's also a special time for me, since it's my last meeting as Fresno County Supervisor representing District 3. Since the election, I received several calls telling me, I feel bad that you lost, and I'm sorry that you lost. Well, I'm here to tell you, I didn't lose, I won. Okay? We don't need a recount, but I've won. Let me explain, since the 1980s, I had two goals, to make Fresno a better community. Goal number one was to serve on the Fresno City Council. And while I was there, it became an all-American city. I served with great mayors, council members, department heads, and employees at the city of Fresno. In fact, our C O's father was one of the leaders in, at the, at the city of Fresno, great guy. Also served, secondly, on the Fresno, goal number two, was serving on the Fresno County Board of Supervisors. So I've accomplished both goals, and I won. I'm blessed to have served with caring and diligent and thoughtful colleagues. You guys are the best. Let me tell you a little bit about them. Supervisor Brian Pacheco, District 1, Supervisor Steve Brandow, District 2, Supervisor and Vice Chairman Buddy Mendez, District 4, and Supervisor Chairman Nathan Magzig from District 5. We all come from different backgrounds and different walks of life. It's a credit to the character of these individuals that, as different as we are, we find a way to work together. As different as we are, we are all for making Fresno County a better place for all who live here, for all who work here, for all who visit here, and for all who connect here. I'm honored to stand with these gentlemen when it comes to fighting for our county. We may not always see eye to eye, but we will never put ourselves above our duty to Fresno County. We, we found, we find ways to work together and move forward for the betterment of the county. I want to thank all of you for your hard work and your dedication. You're the best. Almost done. I would be remiss if I didn't thank our Fresno County volunteers serving on boards and commissions. It's a thankless job, but you care. To our leadership teams, the C O's office and their staffs, each and every department head and our employees stepping up to solve problems and take care of our county. I'd like to thank those departments, and as I've experienced firsthand the great work they performed. If they had any motto to, to live by, whenever we call and ask for help, their motto would be, you call, we haul, and that's all. The work gets done. Thank you all. I'd like to mention some accomplishments that we've been able to provide. One is returning all phone calls from constituents. We care. The small, unincorporated community of Calwa, which is one of the most impoverished communities in the country, $7 million of sidewalk improvements, of funds provided by Fresno County and Congressman Jim Costa. The work will begin in 2025, raising $400,000 to rebuild the Calwa Park Swimming Pool, with Kaiser Permanente stepping up and providing $100,000 for that and becoming the main sponsor. That project has been taken over by the Calwa Park Board of Directors, and they will shepherd it to completion. Our annual holiday code drive, everybody participated in in Fresno County. The years that we've had that, 4,000 quotes have been collected, plus monetary donations given to Pavarello House, Marjory Mason Center, Senior Citizens Village, and Lighthouse Recovery Center. Helping us was Republic Services Commission on the Status of Women, Fresno Center, and our own Fresno County employees. Our Child Welfare Services, consolidating children, services recommended, remodel former Costco in Clovis for those services. Foster Care Improvements, Fresno County has become a statewide leader. Other counties are now looking to Fresno County and has implemented solutions to care for children. We've built a new animal shelter. Reedley and Clovis Libraries are open next year, and to me, that's a testament to both Supervisors Mendez and Magzig for continuing to, to encourage our county to get those built for their districts. So, you know, I've served during some interesting times, and I'd like to share a little bit of that. When the city of Fresno was investigated for corruption back in the 1990s, it was called Operation Rezone. I testified in federal court on behalf of the prosecution. I also served when our county, state, and country went through a recession in 2008. I served when our county, state, and world went through the pandemic in 2020. You know, Fresno County's tough. This county is a tough county, and it's, it's, it's just been great working with, with my fellow supervisors and solving problems. In closing, I'd like to thank our Fresno County residents for your patience and understanding to address their concerns in a timely manner. To the media, I want to thank the Fresno Bee for never endorsing me. It's been a while, so thank you, Fresno Bee. It's, it's been an honor. A little bit of advice, it seems to, a little bit of advice to the media, it seems today that the media quotes soundbites and doesn't follow up on whether that elected person ever followed up on that soundbite. Soundbites made and soundbites kept. I asked the media to follow up on those soundbites and make sure that promises are kept. I want to thank Ari Martinez and Rocky Bang for all your hard work. I couldn't have done it without your help and support. I will continue to stay busy and serve my community. I love Fresno County. Thank you all for the great memories, and Merry Christmas to all. May God bless all of you, and remember, I didn't lose, I won. Thank you for touching my life. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sal. And Steve, I know that we're going to have an opportunity here after a few more items, but you're more than welcome to share now, or if you'd like to wait, we can wait. Fair enough. So Madam Clerk, if you can read.
We now move to item number four, under the Administrative Office, approve amendment to the salary resolution, adding one program manager and one administrative analyst in Group 4, and one program technician in Group 6 to the County Administrative Office, ORIG 0120.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Paul Nerland, your C O. Item four, if approved, would add three positions in support of the C O's responsibilities, specifically a program manager. a program manager, admin analyst, and a program technician. To put this in historical context, the sales office had 18 positions from 1979 through about 2010. In the Great Recession, those positions were cut to 11. In the last three years, your board has supported the addition of positions, but those positions were additional functions. We've added three positions for a media team. We've added a position for homelessness, and we've added a position focused on our ARPA resources, but we've never restored the resources that were taken some time ago. The second recommended action appropriately differentiates admin analysts in the CAO's office based on their significant responsibilities and their workload from traditional analyst positions in the county, consistent with prior direction that you've discussed with me. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have and appreciate your support.
Any questions for our CAO? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item, item four? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board for a recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number five. Under Human Resources, conduct the first hearing to amend the Fresno County Master Schedule fees charged in recovery costs ordinance by amending section 1600 Human Resources.
Good morning, Chairman, Board, Hollis. Sorry, please. Let me start over. Good morning, Board. Hollis McGill, Director of Human Resources. The item before you is to conduct the first hearing to amend the county master schedule of fees. The recommended actions will allow the Department of Human Resources to update its hourly labor rates effective February 17, 2025. The last time they were updated was in November of 2020, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Pretty detailed schedule of fees. Appreciate you taking the time to make sure that, I guess, time and motion studies are done regularly so we can charge appropriately. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on item five? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously.
We now move to item number six. Under Public Works and Planning, conduct public protest hearing and receive written protests from owners of property, including their tenants currently, as of such public protest hearing, receiving water service in Fresno County Waterworks District 37 Mile High.
Staff.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board members. Chris Bump with the Department of Public Works and Planning. The item before you today is a protest hearing for restructuring fees for Waterworks District 37 Mile High Water users. Waterworks 37 contains 46 residential lots and provides water service to 41 active connections. The proposed restructured water fees are comprised of a base fee to cover cost of operation, maintenance, and administration of the water system, and a usage fee to be charged based on actual water usage. The proposed fee or proposed rate is intended to fund the operation, maintenance of the system, and raise appropriate reserves for the system. At the conclusion of staff's presentation, after addressing any questions the board may have, the public portion of the hearing should be opened by your board and testimony received from those here today wishing to address your board. At the conclusion of the public protest hearing, staff will tabulate the protest letters that we receive or that have been received and report back to your board the results. That concludes my presentation, and I am available to address any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the board for staff on this item? And I have a script. You know how I love scripts. So here we go. Anytime prior to the close of the protest hearing, property owners wishing to submit a letter of protest or to change or withdraw their earlier submitted letter of protest may make that request to the office of the clerk at the window outside the board chambers. No letters of protest will be accepted, and no withdrawals will be allowed after the protest hearing has been closed. No staff, except for the clerk's deputies, may accept a letter of protest. The public portion of the protest hearing is now open. Are there any questions or comments from the public? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public portion of this protest hearing? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion is approved, and the public portion of this protest hearing is now closed. Tabulations of the letters of protest will now take place. Members of the public wishing to observe the tabulation process are welcome to accompany staff. We only have, I don't know if we have.
Three.
There are three. Is that something we can do relatively quickly, or do you need us to take a break?
We will.
From this item.
We'll just go open them real quick, check that they're valid protest, and come back with the results.
All right. How long do you think that will take you?
Few minutes. I don't know if we can.
You have two.
Two minutes.
Use them wisely.
We'll see what we can do. Thank you.
That's it, right there.
Anybody want to sing? Now's your opportunity. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion to singing. That would be very scary. I'm sure some of you have amazing voices. Mine, not so much. So a little unknown fact to many of you. Buddy Mendez's father had the voice of an angel. I kid you not. And I think you can still find him singing on YouTube. There's still some videos out there floating around. So my dad could play the trumpet, and when I sing, I make a joyful noise, but nobody wants to listen to it except maybe the Lord. Ah, look at that. Little bit over two minutes, but that's okay. Chris, I appreciate you. So I think you have to bring those up to the clerk, and the clerk will announce something here. So clerk, I think it's your, you're supposed to.
Actually, it's staff.
Oh, okay. So staff. Floor's yours.
Still me, Public Works Planning. We have completed counting the ballot, the protests, and out of possible 41 protests, we've received three. There is not a majority protest, and staff recommend your board approve recommended action A.
Is there a motion to approve recommended action A?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that carries unanimously. And that is the end of my script, and we are now done with item six.
We now move to item number seven. Under Public Works and Planning, approve amendment to text application number 389 and adopt ordinance modifying the text of the Fresno County zoning ordinance.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Chris Wada with the Department of Public Works and Planning. This change of the zoning ordinance would amend sections of the recently updated document by modifying the text for conditional use permits related to power production and generation facilities and amending the definitions for public utility facilities. This text amendment was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at its November 14 hearing, and this concludes my presentation unless you have any questions.
Any questions of staff on this item? Seeing none from board members. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on item seven? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. Entertain a motion for staff's approval for item seven.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. I think Buddy's made the motion for almost all the items. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously. Item 7.1.
We now move to 7.1 under Public Works and Planning. Adopt addendum to Fresno County General Plan Final Environmental Impact Report Number 2018031066.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Will Kettler, Public Works and Planning. Bringing this item to you with a unanimous recommendation by the Planning Commission for approval, with one exception, which staff is endorsing and is noted in your agenda item, and I'll get into further detail on that. I'll try to keep my comments brief, as I know you have a full morning. As you know, from a historical standpoint, we're in the sixth cycle of the housing element process, trying to rezone sites to meet our RENA allocation, Regional Housing Needs Assessment allocation. On December of '23, last year, your board acted on five sites, adding 435 units to potential units to our RENA numbers, and today we're here with an objective of adding more units. The Planning Commission considered this item just last week on December 12. They voted seven to zero to unanimously recommend approval, with the exception of one site, which I'll ask Mr. Kremmer to put up on the screen. There's this site here, located at Jensen and Phillips, just east of Clovis Avenue. There are a number of people in opposition to that site. That site also, we had a petition circulated at the Planning Commission, and there was a lot of public testimony, as well as email and verbal correspondence with our staff folks. And so with that, the board, the Planning Commission did not include this in their motion to approve the 17 other sites. So 17 sites total went. This one would drop out. This does not affect, as we noted at the Planning Commission hearing, the overall target objective of our 1,097 units. So we would recommend that your board, it's not included in your recommended action. That's how strongly we feel about it, not needing to be included. So that item would be removed. Secondarily, there have been discussions recently with property owners of two other sites. And mind you, the reason why this is important to us is that the objective has always been, is that the property owners are voluntarily allowing us to rezone their parcels. We're not going after any type of a takings issue or forcing anyone to do anything. Hundreds of properties have been researched and made contact upon, and these are the finals. So the property owners of these sites now are also objecting. We have three emails that were forwarded to the clerk. I believe you have those in your packet. Those sites, also, if we're removed, we purposely build in a buffer so we don't have to come back to hearing. So if these sites were to drop out, your board can actually do that as well, and we would still meet the target objective of what we need. So that would be something that your board could act upon. So those two property, there are three property owners for these sites, contacted staff, et cetera. So speaking, and your agenda item on pages one, two, and three, we recite the fact that the site on Jensen and Phillips should not be included and is not included in the recommended action due to the number of units that can be absorbed. This is a new development, and again, emails should be in your packet. These also do not need to be included. If the owners are not voluntarily wanting to go along with the program, we completely understand that, and that's not our objective. Our objective is to have everyone agree. The only other note is this particular site here, we had questions on. We thought there was an objection, but there's not. So that parcel can stay. So for the record, parcels number to be added, which are not included in your Gen 9 related development, would be parcels number 51214136 and 38, and we would propose those be excluded from action, on your board's action today. That concludes my presentation unless you have any questions.
Any questions from staff? And again, one of the things I want to highlight, you indicated that if you received objection from a property owner identified, you're okay removing that property from this.
Yes, sir. And to clarify, the site, can you put up the red site for me, first site? To clarify, the site here, the objection wasn't from the property owners, from the neighbors, but we had quite a number of neighbors. You may recall, in 2023, we had two sites. We had quite a bit of public opposition. Those were polled. We survived, and we did fine. And we're going to do fine if we get these lots here.
Okay. Thank you. And I know, Buddy, a lot of these are in your district. So any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to reiterate, as staff stated yesterday, we received two emails. He's already stated it. I want to publicly again, for the record, I am wishing to remove APN number 51214138 and 51214136 from removal of this consideration. Both property owners, Mr. Vernon Kerber, have requested that they be removed, and I would like to honor his request.
Understood. So my thought would be, if there are any other items that we want removed from this list, we'll note those, and then when it comes time for making motions, we'll make sure that that's.
Those are my two, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect. Any other comments?
Which ones were?
The two were 51214138 and 51214136, is what I heard Brian say.
Yes, correct.
And anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item, please step forward and state your name for the record. And if there's a specific parcel, just state which parcel you have some concerns about or are supportive of.
Mr. Chairman, board members, good morning. I represent one of those parcels, Mr. Pacheco, and the other two members are out here in the audience. We did send the emails. We were not sure whether you were going to act on them without our presence or not. So I really appreciate the fact that we are being dropped, and that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Seeing no further public comment on this item, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board for action. And what I'd like to see if, well, yeah. Are there any other parcels that we need to give special consideration to that have not already been spoken about, either in staff's presentation? Because I want to make sure we get our motion correct and exclude those parcels. Brian stated two. And then, Will Kettler, you indicated that the one, my office received some calls about the one in Buddy's district at Clovis and Jensen, but you indicated that one on Phillips is dropping out. It's not part of the recommended action anyway.
It's actually not part of the recommendation. It's not included in any of the resolutions or ordinances that are attached. And we note that in the Gen item on page, specifically more in detail on page three.
Excellent.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make your motion to accept staff's recommendation, with the exception to remove, again, APN number 51214138 and 51214136, which I believe was in staff's presentation today, to remove those as well.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
I think that's reasonable. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And I think that passes unanimously.
We now move to 7.2 under Supervisor Mendez and Supervisor Pacheco. Approve and authorize chairman to execute, oh, I'm sorry, this is the one.
With that, just for the public's, 7.2 is being moved to this Friday at 3:00 PM. We're calling a special meeting for that particular item to be heard.
Thank you, Supervisor. We now move to item number eight. Under Social Services, approve amendment to salary resolution deleting seven vacant job specialist position, adding one staff analyst and seven eligibility worker positions to the Department of Social Services, ORIG 5610.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Sanya Bougah, Director of Social Services. This item completes the budget changes that we started during the budget process.
And Sanya, I need you to speak up a little bit louder.
All right. I'm going to get closer. Thank you. This item is requesting your board to delete seven job specialist positions, add seven eligibility workers, and one staff analyst. And this is a second part to the items and position changes that we started during budget process. Part of the reason why this is a second part is we were trying to address the workload, address the state funding changes without negatively impacting any staff. And we were able to do all of those things with doing this as a second part. So the six job specialist positions that we're deleting, we would add seven eligibility workers back. That was the first piece we did during budget. It will allow us to address the workload for our CalWorks, CalFresh, and Medi-Cal programs without negatively impacting staff. The second part of the item is a deletion of a job specialist position and addition of a staff analyst that will allow us to address administrative workload and a delete job specialist position to offset cost. There is no net county cost impact to this item, and there is no funding or staffing impacts in this item when it comes to actual impact to filled positions. Every position that we're deleting are vacant. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Always interested in items that help your department operate more efficiently, and that's what this will do. So anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to item number nine. Board Supervisor Committee reports and comments.
Never. All right. So now is the time for us to share some general comments. So I'm going to start with Supervisor Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will begin under our new order coming in January. It's my understanding we're having new assignments, and I need to formally, I will formally be submitting a submitting a letter that I will be stepping down from the redevelopment successor agency later this month, and Supervisor Mendez will therefore be appointing a new, new member, but it has to formally be done prior to that meeting, and so hopefully this takes care of that. With that, it seems we had budgeted plenty of time for our MOU tax sharing agreement, but we will do that on, on Friday, and hopefully the public will have adequate notice, if they didn't have at the city, that they will now have, and we will discuss that in public. I will say, I will, at this time, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with my two colleagues here on my, my left. We have worked through a lot of issues, and as Supervisor Quintero stated, we may not have always agreed, but we did it in a respectful and constructive manner for all of the residents here in Fresno County. Supervisor Brandal, you and I came in a little bit different, but again, we learned to co, co-work together. And during the pandemic, we authored a lot of things that help our businesses and help our cities and help North Central Fire. For that, I take great pride in, and thank you for your leadership and your ability to work together to get those things done. I believe both of you have represented your constituents well. But as we all know, on any given day, it's the people's will, and they can make their decisions. As Sal stated, maybe they don't always have the, the best information, but again, it's the will of the people. I respect that, and I wish both of you well in whatever future endeavor you so choose to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Quintero, do you have any additional comments?
Yeah, a couple comments that I wanted to point out and, and thank for their help over the years, is our public works. If it's anybody that gets out there and really helps the, the community has been, as we've heard since the pandemic, the supervisors in the rural areas with the trash cleanups, the, the roads that need to, to get fixed and resurfaced, any little job, that's, that's a department to go to, and I know they've been helpful in our district as well. The other one that, departments that I wanted to point out that's been really effective, and it's affected all of us in this, in a good way, because they've watched out for us, they make sure the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, is the Office of the Clerk to the Board. It's, they've gotten, there's a great staff there that, that always looks out for us, makes sure that reports are done on time, and are able to adjust at any time that's needed. So I wanted to thank those two departments. They really impact us here on the dais, and, and a lot of ways make us look really good. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Mendez?
You don't want to speak yet?
No, I go last.
Oh. I, again, want to echo what Supervisor Pacheco said. Serving with Supervisor Quintero and Brandal was, was always pleasurable. I mean, we didn't always agree on everything, but you guys are very civil, and we're very good to work with. And I think this was, we can look back someday and say, maybe this was the golden age of the Fresno County Board of Supervisors. Because any differences we had was never brought out in public, and we never really had any differences that were personal. Everybody, everybody worked that, you know, they came here, this was business, and, you know, they kept their personalities out of it, and I really appreciate it. And I've served on a lot of boards over the years, and this has been, this, these five people, this has been one of the greatest. And Brian knows some of the boards I've sat with. I mean, some, some great people in Fresno County. But I really appreciate it, and wish you luck on everything you're doing, and, and maybe you'll get to golf with your, your brother and dad one more often.
Right. I went out for the first time last week in probably nine months.
Yeah.
So, and, and my game showed it.
Supervisor Brandal?
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, really, Sal did such a great job. I almost just want to say ditto to everything Sal said earlier. But I do just want to express many of the same things that have already been said here. I've really appreciated working with this Board of Supervisors. Very proud of the work done here at Fresno County, and despite some of the things we read about in the media from time to time, my opinion is that Fresno County is in very good hands and has been, doing a very fantastic job. Now, that doesn't mean everything's perfect, that's, and nobody up here really believes that. But everybody working hard, lifting together, has done great things for Fresno County, and I'm sure that's going to continue. I want to thank almost everybody, I, I want to thank everybody that we've worked with, District Two, from the CAO's office, Bernice and her team, and, but then every single department head, and some of them are here today, that we've called up on a moment's notice because one of our constituents has a crisis, a child has been taken from them, and I'll call Sonia, or something else will happen, and I'll call Susan, and, and get some resolution. Dave Lukini helped me just this last week. And so, and then that leads me to say that my favorite thing is when I get to help an actual constituent out there in District Two, and somebody will call you. Saw the folks that came in today in Brian's district that didn't want their parcel put on. And so, doing those little individual, personal things is really my favorite thing of all. And, but I do want to express thanks to everybody. I think as I, so I've been an elected official for, for 12 years now, and, and that gives you a chance to process, you know, you know, life, really. And so, I want to, I want, I think, I hope, and I see Dan O'Connell sitting in the back, I hope that I've changed some over the years, Dan, and, but, you know, because we've gone toe-to-toe in my early days. But I want to hope that I've matured over the years and learned the job better and, and been more effective as time's gone on and on. There's so many things that I have appreciated, and Dan's presence here reminds me of the San Joaquin River Conservancy, buddies talking about serving together. We walked back and forth to FCTA many times, and, and many different things that I've served here on the Board of Supervisors. I do also want to thank Robert Jeffress and Lindsay Parsami and Jones. Lindsay's been with me the entire 12 years, and Robert at about 10 years, and they're both excellent employees, and I think they're gonna continue working with Fresno County. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, and appreciate all the relationships. I think as I leave government, that's my number one thing, that I'm taking away, the friendships, the relationships, and then the pride in the work that we've accomplished. So, thank you.
A few comments I have. So to, to Sal, I've appreciated, I look back on the time that I've served as a staffer. You were on the City Council at the time. You know, I look all the way back to when Mike Briggs was on the council with you, and when, you know, Ken Stites was there as well, and I was, you know, a new staffer trying to figure things out, and didn't need to shave all but once a week, because that's just how it was back then. But watching you over time has been amazing. You have some very, very deep relationships with people in this community. You definitely have, have made your mark, and it reminds me of something that, you know, most people don't even have one opportunity to lead a city or to lead a county, and you've had many decades to do that. And so that definitely is a success and a blessing. And so I've, I've appreciated having an opportunity to watch as a staffer, you lead as an elected, and then also to serve as your colleague on this board. And to Supervisor Brandal, I appreciate, I appreciate you very much. We've had opportunities to pray together, we've had opportunities to discuss different items together, and you are someone who has an incredibly tender heart. You are very fierce, a fierce fighter, you don't back down from anything, and you're someone who loves your Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And as I've been reading through the Book of Ecclesiastes, it reminds me that, you know, all of us, all of us human beings are looking for relationships, trying to fill our lives with different things. If you miss the mark and try to fill it with titles and money, you will live a life that's very lonely, but you've figured out that really there's one thing in life that matters, and that's a relationship with your personal Lord and Savior, and, and you've lived that. So I appreciate that about you very much. This past year as chair, we've seen many things. It reminds me, when I had an opportunity to serve as chair back in 2019, Jean Rousseau's like, man, this year's been really tough. And then we had COVID, and that buddy had to chair through, and then we had the creek fire after that, and it seems like things continue to get more and more challenging and difficult. And, but again, it reminds me that even though I get stressed out and frustrated sometimes, just getting to get up in the morning and have an opportunity to lead is a blessing. And so I want to thank the public for allowing this board to work together, really the last five-plus years, to deliver many projects to you. It has been a blast working with all of you. I do look to the future. I, I'm always in search of wisdom, that's for sure, but I have enjoyed serving as chair in 2024, and look forward to continuing to serve as your supervisor here next year. So with that, let's move on to the next item.
Item number 10, Board Appointments.
Supervisor Brandal?
Yes, I have one appointment today to the IHSS Advisory Committee, Danielle Wilkins, to the vacant District Two consumer seat.
Supervisor Mendez? Supervisor Quintero? And I do not have any, but since we have one item, is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on the one appointment we'll be making? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public portion, entertain a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. We'll take Brian Pacheco as the second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? That passes unanimously.
We now move to item number 11, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons who desire and address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Hi, hi, I'm Brooke Frost, sorry. I'm Brooke Frost, one of the volunteers that Supervisor Quintero talked about. I'm the Chair of the Behavioral Health Board, and I would just like to say publicly that we, how much we appreciated having Supervisor Quintero on our board over the years. I know all the different chairs and the different board members enjoyed working with you, and I would like to personally say that your advice and your perspectives were very appreciated in my first year. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I wanted to be sure to be down here, and just to say thanks to Steve in particular. I feel like we've been on a journey. I've matured a lot, and serving on the Conservancy Board with you, we literally got to sit next to each other a lot of the time. We look alike. You, what Nathan mentioned is true, and I think it's true for myself, and I think a lot of the people that do politics. Matured and grown. I, speaking for myself, but I witnessed that humanity in you grow, and I just wish the best for you. I am, I, I'm gonna miss you, and I am really proud that we, you bring forward a vote, I seconded it, to begin to open up the great Central Park of the valley that has yet, that's the beginning. Those votes did, unanimous votes in a contentious issue. I avoided the contention. I walked into after it was already done. And I just want to say thank you, you know? And I really have appreciated getting to know you. So I'm gonna miss you. And best of luck, and I hope to have lunch with you and catch up on an informal way. I always wanted to say, Steve, let's go have fud down the street after one of those meetings. So let's do that now. Appreciate you. Thank you.
I would like to speak about the housing, or specifically the homelessness issue in Fresno County. I lost my notes here. Here we go. According to Not My Tax Dollars, Fresno sends $6,393,681 in funding to Israel's genocide against the Palestinian people, which could instead be used to fund 760 households with public housing for a year. Why are our tax dollars spent on war crimes in the Middle East when they should be spent right here, in our community, in our cities? Or how about the tax dollars being spent on the heart team going around and brutalizing unhoused folks instead of helping them at all? There have been stories of the heart team picking up literal animals, pets, and throwing them, destroying their legal documents or social security cards or birth certificates. It has been statistically proven that it is not only cheaper, but more successful to fund social programs such as addiction treatment and public housing than to criminalize the act of being unhoused. I know this, you know this. Houston, Texas saw 63% reduction in homelessness by adopting a housing-first strategy. Finland saw 68% decrease with their housing-first program. But instead, you want the taxpayers to bear the brunt of thousands, of the thousands and thousands of dollars it costs to incarcerate these poor folks annually. The people of Fresno are struggling to make ends meet. Over 20% of our residents are below the federal poverty line, almost double the percentage both state and nationwide, according to calmatters.org. We can't afford the cost of living. We're working ourselves into an early grave ironically just to survive. Yet, instead of addressing that, we are worried about tents on sidewalks. And, well, that's all I had to say, but I still got a couple minutes, so I did just want to say, for those of you who are staying on this board, good luck working with Gary Bretfeld.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Olga Maya Silva. I live in Delray. I want to address, there are two vacancies within the community of Delray on the Delray Community Service District. One has been vacant, one board position has been vacant for over a year, and another one has been vacant over four months. I have always advocated for Delray. I've been on, served on various committees, various boards. I was on the Delray Community Service District 30 years ago. I served on the board as a board member, and I would like to be nominated or be considered to be appointed as a board member for the Delray Community Service District. As I said, I have been an advocate, I have lived there most of my life. I am involved in the community, in various organizations in the community. I'm part of the Delray Alumni Association, where we give scholarships to the children, or raise money for scholarships for children, and I'm very active in the community. I currently do live outside of the district, but I also want to be an advocate, that I want to be included in the district. I want the boundaries included, moved to include my property. My father, who I have power of attorney over, lives in the community of Delray within the district perimeter, and he has a rental which I oversee. So if you please consider me to be appointed to a position on the board. Thank you.
My name is Alyssa Koch, and I, along with my sister, live in Delray. I have recently moved. I'm a veteran, retired government employee. I've been trying to get involved more with the district or with the, with Delray, and I would also like to be considered. Thank you.
My name is Linda Tubak. I live in Yocuts Valley, and I'm here to express my disappointment in the county's failure to adequately address the housing and homeless crisis along with our city. We're constantly hearing reports that unhoused persons do not receive services, they're on long waiting lists, they do not receive permanent housing. Meanwhile, the population continues to grow and to suffer, and suffer through, in particular, being cycled through temporary housing, which has made the housing managers and their minions plenty of money, but is not solving the problems. We still don't have new affordable housing, we don't have rent subsidies for people that need them, and we don't have sufficient social services or drug rehab programs. We also constantly hear that county social workers have huge workloads and extremely high turnover, so I'm here to say that it's time to step up our investment in social services. And it really is disheartening to see that the only people that are currently being served by the current situation are the many small businesses and privately owned sub... served by the current situation are the many small businesses and privately owned subcontractors that the county and the city fund to provide social services that the government is failing to provide. I think there needs to be a big overhaul in how we approach this problem. Fresno County has an extremely high poverty rate. It also has a lot of very wealthy landowners, and yet we continue to see the most vulnerable in our community suffer. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or still the morning, I suppose. But my name is Enrique Little, and I, like many other citizens of this great city, am here to voice my opposition to the past housing element. And if I could ask Mr. Pacheco to please stop pretending like he's working and pay attention to constituent, thank you very much. The proposal that was put forth not only fails to address the needs of the houseless community of Fresno, but it does not even comply with the fair housing mandates set forth by the state of California. The regional policy, the regional policies in Exhibit C of this housing element mention vulnerable communities such as seniors and people with disabilities, but are ignorant of the fact that not only are houseless people the most vulnerable citizens of Fresno, but that homelessness can and often does intersect with age and disability. If this proposal was truly meant to look out for those people, it would start with addressing the needs that they, this community has in their day-to-day life. Also mentioned in the regional policies are incompatible and disruptive activities in, on land. To this, I ask, is the survival of our neighbors incompatible and disruptive? Exhibit C Policy 7.2 says it wants to protect residents from homelessness, but its true purpose is to protect people from seeing homelessness. This policy will not help anyone. The proposed measures of crisis intervention and training for law enforcement officers and members of the heart team only work if the training is actually used. Instead, as we speak, officers are stalking the most impoverished areas of Fresno, harassing any houseless person they please and destroying what little possessions they may have. The way that this is enforced is not compliant with the fair housing mandates that I previously mentioned, and this measure further flies in the face of not only those mandates, but the values that we have as human beings and as residents of the Central Valley. I, like many other members of this community, express my disapproval and frankly disgust with how the city intends to treat this community, addressing real issues with not solutions, but cruelty meant to be swept under the rug. I implore this council once again to reconsider and take another plan of action, and I implore you all to have a heart. Thank you.
Good morning, board members and fellow county residents. Apologies for my horse throat. I am getting over a cold. Fresno City and County have asked for accountability regarding homelessness, and I agree. But by far, the greatest weight of accountability should fall on Fresno County leaders and housed residents. Unhoused people are our neighbors and your constituents. In the past few weeks, I've seen teenage siblings living outside, sometimes pushing their mom in her wheelchair. I've seen a young man who has a double amputee. I've seen an older lady with a broken foot whose medical team is moving slowly to help her. I've seen so many older adults. What shall we hold them accountable for? Being poor? Meanwhile, according to the sixth cycle Regional Housing Needs Allocation, we need almost 25,000 very low to low-income housing units. This is likely a large undercount at this point, as this was written in late 2021. Meanwhile, multiple nonprofits in Fresno have expressed concern about the number of shelter beds available in the county. In Fresno City, it may be in the hundreds if it's a fortunate night. Our unhoused population number is in the several thousands. With this, is it any wonder that people are sleeping in public spaces with nowhere else to go? Yet we imprison or fine them with money they don't have. It's time to take responsibility and do better for our neighbors. Some things we need are long-term substance use disorder treatment centers and low-cost or no-cost sober living homes. We need transitional housing and low-barrier shelters. We need safe lots and camps to stabilize individuals experiencing homelessness. We need affordable housing initiatives for households earning 30% or less of the area median income. We need permanent supportive housing for mental health patients. We need a dedicated mental health crisis outreach team. Instead of piling everything on top of the police department, we need emergency funding for families experiencing homelessness on the streets, allowing them to be placed in a motel or a shelter within four hours. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have about six more minutes for this particular topic, so if we can make sure that we keep our comments succinct, that would be good.
Okay, good morning. Good morning.
Sir, this is not a topic, this is public comment. I think you're violating--
I'm pretty sure I'm Chair. You can sit down. If you want to come up and make a comment, you can. Please let the speaker make her comments. You're disrupting the meeting now. You're going to be removed. You either sit down and come up and speak, or you'll be removed. Thank you. Speaker, it's your time.
All right. Good morning, this panel of white men that somehow is supposed to represent this very large and diverse county. I don't understand that. I'm agreeing with the other comrades here. We're very disappointed in your handling of everything. There are people out there willing to do the work. You just need to, like, give us help. Like, why are you putting this money into bombing Gaza, free Palestine? You're putting money into a new helicopter, $7 million that could be put back into our community. It's just, I'm going to make it short, but it's just ironic, sitting here listening to you all talk about your faith and tender-hearted Mendez and how you pray and you love your Jesus. But would Jesus be happy of this, that you're imprisoning people for existing in public, that they're having issues? Like, people have problems. You think this affects just a select group of people, but if you don't have community, like, you don't have support. I don't have community. I work all the time. Homelessness is like a crisis in my life that could happen. It affects everybody. That's it.
Randy Svegas, just briefly, there's a context to people speaking as people throughout the state are speaking up regarding unhoused justice. And the board supervisors going next year have opportunity to do better than the city in a number of things, as you've heard some of the concerns with heart. And I appreciate that in the, in the resolution that you guys passed in October, that it mentions things that it, it does create protections. It states that the city of, the county of Fresno is responsible for the health and well-being and safety of all Fresno County residents, including those who are in the encampments. I appreciate that we have that in writing. I appreciate the fact that when it talks about encampments, while we do not want them cleared, that it even mentions that when it comes to determining whether or not a belonging is trash or belonging, to always veer towards belonging. So I recognize that when that was brought up, there are things in your documentation that is significant and needs to be used, needs to be written out for our city. I do want to ask, as we are looking into things, and there is a, I know that there will be a public hearing regarding the housing element, and that's in public comments, for things that we need, that I asked to focus on. One is having a county lived experience board, so you can hear more from those who are experiencing these things, to focus on housing first. Someone mentioned about that, that that is a primary need that we have, as we have those who are exiting out of the shelters into, back onto the streets. And more for family, as I remember that Moreno in 2022 said, that families make up 17% of the homeless population in the county. I ask that the county works on, that you guys also focus in the new year on coming up with systems of accountability to ensure that your programs are being more effective in addition to getting housing, because I've been hearing concerns in the shelters about treatment, including what's happening to those who are trying to work, even like people who are trying to work who are having trouble and have grievances in the shelters. And Fresno Authority, because of that, for the two that they manage, started a grievance system with Turning Point, would like to see a measure of accountability that extended to you, to work with the city to have that for all, all programs in shelters, to ensure that we have the greatest amount of success. But all of it hinges on having a really dynamic Housing First approach, so that we can ensure that those who are coming out of programs, that those who are coming out of shelters have permanent housing, and that we do not lose, have anywhere else, lost the street, as well as having more resources for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for my outbursts. Supervisor Max, I did want to wish you the best, Mr. Brandow. I know we met over this issue a few times. I do appreciate the fact that Sheriff Zanoni and Mr. Brandow and others in the county are not aggressively enforcing the new ordinance as the city of Fresno is. I did want to bring up a few things. One of them is the cold weather that we're seeing coming and the rain. City of Fresno is not opening its warming centers unless it's 34 degrees. Thankfully, the Fresno Mission, and I give credit to Matt Dilldine for that, is opening their warming center all winter. And last winter, very cold winter before last, we were out there trying to find shelters for county unsheltered folks, and we couldn't find any. I think there was one in Sanger for a while, but that closed pretty early. So I'd urge people to, the board to, while you have the time, to consider opening some more warming centers. A growing number of people, many of them older and homeless, are freezing to death in the winter. This is from a recent study from data by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Hypothermia deaths have always increased nationwide as well, but the rise in homelessness, especially in California, is increasing that numbers. People, homeless people are particularly susceptible to hypothermia because so many older vulnerable adults live outside, whether I expose the elements. I can tell you, I work with others, and we go out there, and we hand out blankets, sleeping bags, tents, food. We try to assist people and do mutual aid, material aid when we can. I meet a lot of elderly folks, I meet a lot of disabled folks that aren't using any sort of drugs, they just don't have the income to rent a place. And as you know, the county is short some 35,000 housing units. We need to drastically improve low-income housing startups in this county. As, as you can see, with these rising number of deaths, and deaths have increased dramatically since 2023, there was, there's been an increase. Last year, there was 166 deaths on the streets of California, and those are an undercount. And this is simply from not having shelter at night. So I know you folks talk about, you know, the Lord, and I, Lord, give me strength, that's what I say, because we have to, we have to abide by what the teachings of Jesus said, especially during this season. Let's go out there and, and help and try to do what we can for those that are poor. Let's go out there and help those that are our neighbors and friends, because we're all one human family, and that's what Jesus would want, especially during this season. Thank you.
And Dez will be our last speaker.
Uh-oh, you started it already, dude. So I would like you all to know that you guys just violated my First Amendment right by blocking me from bringing in posters. Behind me, you have a banner and a poster larger than the size that I had. There's no rules or ordinance or laws that state in the meetings that I cannot have it. It states that if I have posters and they're too big, then I can sit in the back of the room. So I would like to know why I was denied my right to bring these posters in? You guys aren't going to tell me why you violated my rights? Okay, see you in court then for that one. Imagine being pushed for simply trying to rest your head after an exhausting day of wandering, or asking for a few coins to buy a meal when you have no other option. This is not a solution, it is an attack. These laws do not address the root cause of homelessness. They do not provide affordable housing, create jobs, or expand excessive mental health care or addiction treatment, services that are desperately needed in our area. Instead, they sweep the problem under the rug as if punishing the homeless individual and pushing them out of sight. We can make the issue disappear, but we know better. Homelessness is not about solving and hiding it, it is about addressing the deep systematic inequities that cause it. Furthermore, these laws disproportionately affect marginalized communities. People of color, LGBTQ plus individuals, and veterans are more likely to experience homelessness than they are more likely to be targeted by these laws. When we criminalize homelessness, we are perpetuating cycles of discrimination and oppression against these groups. To those who support these laws under the belief that they will clean up the streets, I say this: Humans are not litter. They are not the problem to be swept away. They are mothers, fathers, childrens, veterans, and individuals who face unimaginable hardships. Homelessness is not the moral failing, is the sociable one. The, and these laws fail to recognize that the humanity of the people that they target. Instead of criminalizing homelessness, we should be investing in comprehensive supportive systems, affordable housing at 30% or less, and not 50 or 80. Healthcare, job training, and social services. We should be creating society where no one has to choose between sleeping on the streets or going to jail, where no one has to beg for survival. These new laws are discriminatory, plain and simple. They punish people for being poor. They punish vulnerable individuals further into marginalized, stripping them of their dignity and their rights. And they tell us as a society that we are willing to turn a blind eye to suffering rather than extend a helping hand? But we are better than this. We can be more compassionate, more just, and more humane. It's time to repeal these laws and instead focus on real solutions that address the root cause of homelessness. Let us choose kindness, understanding, and action over fear, ignorance, and apathy.
Thank you, Dez.
Is that the end of my shit? Oh, I mean, stuff? Sorry.
Dez, thank you.
I need five more seconds.
With that, I'm going to close the public portion, and is it about?
It's regarding Delray.
You can step forward. You, you have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. My name's Ramal DeRae. I was a board member for eight years in the District of Delray, as President of Delray. And I know we weren't agendized or anything like that, but I tried to get on there, and I couldn't get through the line to agendize the item. But when I got elected on the board, Judy Kayes actually elected me. I came here, and I got elected by her and, and the supervisors at the time. And right now, we're in a situation where we don't have two board members in the district of Delray, the special district. And we have these beautiful ladies here that are willing to serve the district. I don't understand why we, it's, it's an issue right now. The system's broken there. We need, we need two other board members to represent the district, and they're here to give their, to, to, to do that, you know? Is there any way we can get them maybe somehow appointed?
I would encourage you to work with Supervisor Mendez's office on this particular item. Delray, I think, is in your district. So why don't you, why don't you work with Supervisor Mendez? It may require us to agendize something in the future, but there's, we cannot solve that issue today.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'm going to close the public portion, and Madam Clerk, what do we have next?
At this time, we will take up closed session, public comments 12 through 17.3, excluding item 16 that was deleted from this morning. You do have a member of the public who wishes to address you on a closed session item. If she would step forward and address it and advise us of which item she's speaking to, that would be wonderful.
Hello?
Hello. My name is Mike Bow with Plus Trans, here in Fresno, California. I'm here today because there was a zoning violation for truck parking that--
I'm sorry.
Item 17. Item 17. I'm here today because there was a zoning violation for truck parking at 1270 South Temperance Avenue in Fresno, and the board of supervisors will be making a decision today in closed session on this matter. My, my parents, Warren and Manjith Ball, another couple of Ms. and Mr. Water, jointly purchased a 20-acre parcel located at 1270 Temperance Avenue in Fresno County. This is a property where the trucks were previously parked. They weren't able to farm it, so they let me use it as an office. I dispatch trucks, meaning that I only need a computer and a phone. My company, Plus Trans, does not load or unload trucks. There is no actual freight movement by Plus Trans. I simply book loads and tell drivers where to go. This property is surrounded by subdivisions where truck drivers-- and down the street from freeway, a few truck drivers that live in that area learned that 20 acres were vacant, so they asked if they could leave their trucks on the property-- This property is surrounded by subdivisions where truck drivers-- and down the street from freeway, a few truck drivers that live in that area learned that 20 acres were vacant. So they asked if they could leave their trucks on the property overnight as they were leaving. They imparted the sides, on the roads, around the subdivision, and it wasn't safe. The trucks were being vandalized, so for a small fee, I let them park for a shorter time. I did not know this was a problem to let them park on the dirt property. They were not loading or loading freight. They were only parking there. The other drivers started parking there while they were waiting to go into the district. They would just pull onto the park, property without asking. I know some of the drivers that were parking there, but I didn't know other drivers that would park there for a few hours. Then a few times, the county came and issued citations for truck parking. The truckers explained that they had no other place to park nearby other than the side of the street. So I paid citations. I had no other places to park nearby the sides. So I paid the citation. I guess that they were like parking tickets, and they just needed to be paid. I had no idea, I guess, that they were parking tickets. The county could file a lawsuit and sue Plus Trans for $50,000 in penalties. It was until the lawyer explained to me the zoning issue that I understood that their trucks parked there anywhere. Once the lawyers told me this, I merely did my best to remove all truck parking on the property as of October 31st, 21st. All the trucks and trailers had been removed, and lock was put on the fence with no trespassing. Once the lawyer explained everything to me, I merely did what I could to fix the situation. I'm a college dropout. I don't know about the zoning requirements or legal issues involved. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. We will take that into consideration.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I am, my name is Kenai. I am Mike's sister, and I want to just give the board some additional information for consideration. So this property is 20 acres of vacant land. It is down the street from the Destry, which is a huge manufacturing plant. There are trucks parked on both sides of the street, and it is a terrible parking situation. And I think the county is well aware of the lack of truck parking. So this vacant 20 acres, people started parking on there. Mike did not understand. He's a college dropout. No offense, people are very successful without a college education. But he had no idea of the zoning regulations. He simply did not understand them. He thought he was getting a citation. He paid the citation. He thought that was the end of it. When the complaint was filed by the county and to go see an attorney, that's when the attorney explained to him exactly what the zoning violations are and what can or cannot be done on the property. This meeting took place, I want to say, in September. By the end of October, October 31st, the entire property had been vacated of any truck or trailer. So the minute he understood the gravity of the situation, he immediately complied with it. I understand the county is still seeking to fine him $50,000. Putting a small business owner out of business literally is taking revenue away not only from the county, but it's not helping alleviate the truck parking situation either. So today, he's here to ask the county that he's already complied by removing all the trucks and trailers. There's a fence, there's a lock, there's a lock on there. He's asking for the board to not fine him $50,000 for simply trying to help the truckers that were parking along the street.
County Council, do you need to opine a little bit?
Well, I would say that we do have a written offer from his counsel to pay the $50,000 over time. So are you withdrawing that offer?
He would ask the board to consider not fining him at all, given the fact that he is already complying, and there's nothing on the property. There's a fence and a lock on it. Fining him is going to serve no purpose. And we would want the board to consider that.
We will consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Seeing no further comments on items that are on closed session, I'm going to close the public portion. Council, are there things that we're going to need to report out on after closed session?
Mr. Chairman, we do not anticipate any announcements out of closed session. So if the board chooses, they may adjourn following closed session.
I will entertain a motion to do just that. We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? We will now go into closed session. Thank you all for being here. Bernice, let me know when we're, all right? Well, good morning. Welcome to the December 17th Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order, and we're going to begin with the roll call.
Supervisor Brandal?
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco?
Here.
Supervisor Mendez? I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Supervisor Quintero?
Here.
Chairman Magsick?
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
First on the agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance. And before I introduce our speaker, I just want to let everyone know that we're going to--